If we're gonna pay him, I want to hear it.
Check, check, check Tony's invoices.
I, I just figured I'd ask.
With that, I would make the motion to approve the agreement with the basis of billing to be on the cost times of the fire based upon the fire of his company's federal audit and approval.
Do you agree with that as the second?
I do.
We have a motion on the panel and further discussion.
Are we gonna have an engineer here every meeting or not?
The contract doesn't say. I think it's for us to make a decision how we want to do it. Bill, I'd go either way, but I like, I like the other idea that somebody threw out, have them here and get their business done first and be done with it.
Well, I-
Danny likes that idea.
I don't know that that has to be in the contract, but I think-
But the problem is-
No, I don't think it is either.
...on the minds before we-
Yeah, yeah.
But the problem with that is we, we just don't cover engineering topics within that first hour. The, the issue is we-
We should.
-come up throughout the whole meeting.
They have to be in-
We should. We can do the reason.
Anything that's engineering related needs to be up there underneath the engineer.
Be done with it, yeah.
Yeah.
In and out.
Even if it requires a vote in an, in an action item, it needs to be under the engineer.
So are we abandoning the one meeting a month?
No, we're still going to two meetings. The issue is, is that-
We're gonna limit the-
-when they're there, they, they get, they get, we get their business done and take it down.
In other words, we can have him here for four hours once a month, or we can have him here for an hour twice a month. And still save money.
We think we can do that within the first hour.
Sounds like my wife.
Try it. I'm trying. Okay, we have a, does that, does that help you?
Oh, definitely.
That was engineering speak. I'll stay with the motion.
I'm still second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome aboard.
Bye, Danny. October 1st!
I'm looking at the rest of your agenda. I don't see anything engineering related.
So get out. Thank you.
Yeah, and your, your pay doesn't start tonight.
October 1st.
There you go.
Would you entertain trade and trade your time to-
There you go.
C, request for a letter of no objection to the voting change for the Girl Scouts.
Motion to deny.
I don't see where, I mean, obvi- to me, it just seems like if there's gonna be, if there's, if they're not going to get letters of no objection from the HOAs, they're gonna have to go to a public hearing anyway, so-
I think we all got, or I think, did we all get that letter that he was handing you?
Even after the agenda, I think most of you got it.
I, I got one.
Yeah, I got it. I, I see absolutely no reason why we get out the middle of, of this mess.
I mean, it's gonna have to go to the hearing examiner, because they're not gonna get the letters of no objection they want, so why should we say no?
Again, my motion to deny the letter of no objection.
I second them.
Maybe just second, I didn't really-
Take my second.
No, I, I-
He just wanted a second before we vote, so if you have a comment, go ahead. He's reading. Okay. My, my question is, do they have everybody else's? No. No. Okay, that was my question. That's why I seconded the first session.
Madam Chair, we do have Mary Ann Servian here, she's from the Girl Scout Council, and she'd like to speak. Mary Ann Servian's here from the Girl Scouts, and she'd like to speak briefly. If you let her, she did not get here when we had our comments.
Certainly, certainly, by all means. And go ahead and, and state your name again.
Thank you so much. My name is Mary Ann Servian, and I am the CEO of Girl Scouts of Gulf Coast, Florida. We are a 10-county council and cover 10,000 square miles and represent 6,000 girls and 3,000 volunteers. I've been with the Girl Scouts for 16 months, and when I came here, I inherited this kind of, I don't know what we call this kerfuffle, with this piece of property. As you may know, the property has been vacant for several years, and I know there's been multiple attempts to sell the property, all of which have come up against this issue of the underlying zoning on the property. Originally, the property had no designated zoning, so that part had been changed to allow certain classification of uses that very, very closely match the zoning classification we're asking for now. When we approached Lee County, we were asked to come to you first for a letter of no objection. Two weeks ago, we received notification, or three weeks ago, we received notification that they would now like to take what they're calling a holistic view of the property, and asking that we engage the immediate neighbors, which we most certainly would do. For point of clarification, or at least for education, I was a city commissioner and mayor of the city of Sarasota. When I was elected, I was elected because of my sensitivity to compatibility with neighborhoods. I came out of the Neighborhood Association. When we started this process, I specifically asked that any classification that this property would be rezoned to would be compatible with the residents next door and the church. We are not asking for any intense zoning classification. Unfortunately, the way the, you know, the county's zoning is written, when you go to general office district, there's 13 choices. We certainly would never entertain, you know, putting a nursing home there. There's not enough parking, for one thing. One of the other things, and we're currently allowed to do, by the way, is recreational facilities, but under recreational facilities, there's everything from a health club to a golf course. Well, there's obviously not enough room in 1.2 acres or 1.6 acres to put a golf course there. So we're asking for a letter of no objection to move it to community office district, so that we can then go to the Neighborhood Associations and ask them to support it as well. I would wanna work with the neighborhoods to see if there are any of these things that they would like stricken before we move forward with the county. Our hope is to be able to sell the property, probably for office. We have some security concerns at the property because it's been vacant. Our property manager visits the property often and has found discarded needles and condoms and clothes, and we're really worried about the property. The security of the neighborhoods nearby are concerning as well. So that's why we're asking to do this, so that we can market this piece of property and have it sold, and reinvest those funds into the opportunity for us to continue our leadership programs with our girls.
And I do, I understand what you're saying, and I guess the county told you to come to us first?
They did.
I think you actually should have started with the HOAs first, because-
Well, I would have, except they told us not to. I went and simply had an informational meeting with the folks at the county, and they said, "Look, why don't you just have your attorney prepare a request to come through with an administrative adjustment? We can see that this wasn't zoned properly to begin with, and if you go to the, the CDD and get a letter of no objection, we'll be able to take it through the process." Then, lo and behold, three weeks ago, we get this letter from the Community Development Director saying, "No, you now need to do this." Well, we will, but, you know, we're trying to follow the rules. We're trying to do what they've asked us to do. So that's why we came here first.
Does she have a copy of what we have, that we got from the-
I do.
And you're aware, you're aware that we've, we went through the similar process on that property?
I am.
So you, you know that we didn't get the letter of no objection from the residents?
I do.
Okay.
I do. And what's happening is it's going to render our property unsellable, and we're then going to have to figure out, what are we gonna do with a vacant parcel, and who is gonna be responsible for that taking? Because it is a taking legally. So I just don't know where we go from there if we can't get support from the surrounding neighborhood. We really wanna work with the neighborhood and do what's best for the whole community. This community originally was planned to have mixed uses and to be a balanced community, and that's what we want to be able to provide, and we wanna be able to do what's best for all. Well, certainly, a vacant property that is attracting vagrants is not what's best for everybody.
May I, Madam Chairman?
Yeah, go right ahead.
May I, eh, would you be interested in selling the property to us?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We would be interested in selling it to anyone who is willing to, who's willing to have a compatible use. So absolutely, we are. You know, we have gone down this road. I talk to the previous CEO all the time, and she said, "We have been trying to sell this property for many years." You know, what, what's happened, and I'll tell you the reason why we abandoned the property to begin with. Our girls don't live in that area. It's predominantly a retirement area, so those younger families aren't there. They weren't coming there for the meetings anymore. They were arranging for meetings in their churches or other community centers. The, we had a shop there. It was so poorly used. It was costing us so much just to keep it staffed. So the decision was made by the Board of Directors and the previous CEO to just close it and then sell it. And here we sit, five years later, and the building still wasn't sold.
I think the thing that I've heard, I live over in that neighborhood, or that area, and the, the scum that I'm hearing is, is that I think you and Bev need to get over there, meet with that HOA, and take that plethora of things that you can do, and shrink it down to the things they'll let you do, and that is your only chance.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because I had suggested six months ago that we have a neighborhood meeting. You know, coming from where I do as an elected official, I always start it with neighborhood meetings, always. Any developer that came through the, the city, we always said to them, "You go have neighborhood workshops first. Figure out what they want, what they don't want, what adjustments can be made before you bring it through the process."
Well, the last time when we were trying to purchase that property, we ran into the same nightmare that we had to jump through this process.
Yeah.
And that was our obstacle, the HOA.
And unfortunately-
It was a nightmare.
And unfortunately, I find the tenor of that letter to be very upsetting. We're not trying to do anything that is untoward. We're not trying to do anything sneaky or behind anyone's back, and sort of by hiring an attorney, it makes it sound like we're trying to do something evil. Well, I am not an attorney. I can't take this through the process. You know, I did stay in a Holiday Inn Express once, but I'm still not an attorney.
I know the easy thing would be the administrative here, you know, the administrative change, but it sounds like the HOA's not gonna want to go that route. They're not gonna give you the letter of no objection, and it's gonna have to go to the hearing examiner.
Which is really a shame, 'cause that's probably gonna cost us about $40,000. That is money that should go back into, you know, our mission to help our girls. You know, one of the things that we do know is that the way it is currently, that the uses that are allowable, we could sell it to another nonprofit that could have a much more intense use on that spot, which is not what we wanna do, but we have to do something. We just can't keep paying, you know, for the maintenance, the depreciation, and it just, you know-
And I think what Mr. Tinkelman is right. I think if you go to those property owners and you say, "Look, we'll take this one off, and this one off, and this one off, if those are the ones that you objected, but we need to sell it for so, and so what was it, what would be acceptable to you?"
Sure.
That's, I think that's probably the only way you would go.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I would have done it that way if we had been instructed to do it that way, right? So it's kind of, you know, it's a shame that we have wasted all these many months. We have had many people interested in purchasing the building, and of course, as you well know, unless this is zoned properly, what's the point? Then you're gonna have to go throw yourself-
Well, what really, I think, was the straw that broke the camel's back, is when the rumor about, three months ago, started that we're selling it, it was gonna be an Italian restaurant.
Well, can I tell you where that came from?
And I have no idea where it came from, but it was all around our neighborhood.
Well, I'll tell you where, I'll tell you where it came from. It came from the fact that there is someone who lives in, is it Pinecrest?
Yes.
Who lives in that neighborhood, who wanted to purchase that property. He did wanna put in an Italian restaurant, and he claimed that he had all of the HOA on board. He was gonna offer them discounts and make sure that it was closed at a certain time, and I thought, "Well, if we could get a letter of no objections from that," I said, "I certainly wouldn't want a restaurant in my backyard," right?
Anyway.
So that's where it came from.
Laying the groundwork for what?
Well, as you can see, under the, the suggested uses instructions, you can't put a restaurant in there. We removed all of that.
I know. We went through the same order, so you're preaching to the choir.
So you feel my pain, okay.
I think, I think the best thing to do is, you, the attorney, meet with the HOA and the five, I think, I think there were five neighbors that were within the 500 feet-
Yeah.
-that you had to get them. And the other one is, you might get the HOA approval, but I know those five. We had a nightmare with them on us trying to get it, when we were trying to buy it for our office.
Yeah, I mean, I-
It was a nightmare.
And at some point, like I said, at some point, this becomes a taking, and it becomes a legal action against the HOA, and we are precluded from selling this property.
And I think a meeting with you and your attorney, and your attorney telling them that would go along with it.
Great.
And, and just, just for clarity, and I did ask our, our attorney, this zoning is required for you to sell or lease the property, correct?
Correct.
Or rent, or-
Right, we can do anything with it.
You can't do anything with it right now until the zoning change.
That is correct. So, you know, again, it just continues to present what I think to be an attractive nuisance, and we're gonna continue to have issues there, so-
So there's clearly no action for us at this point?
Yeah, even though I'd love to come out of here with a letter of no objection and then go to the HOA.
Well, they objected when we wanted to use it, so they wouldn't make any difference as far as they're concerned. They just don't, they wanna know-
So I guess what I, if I get it from them, I still have to come and get one from you. I still have to have one from here.
Right, now, that is the, the level that I'm looking at. You get their approval, I don't have an issue with that.
Oh, okay. So I mean, I have to come back to her anyway, right? So, all right, well, I appreciate your time. I'm sorry that you went through this, and now we're going on going through it again, and, I mean, one of these days, before I retire, this is gonna get settled.
Thanks for listening, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion that's taken on board?
To make it official.
Yeah, so let you withdraw your motion, and I just go my second.
No.
Okay.
For what?
He, he denied-
Deny the, uh-
To do the letter of no objection.
Let's get the first-
I think we'll have to table it.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's an option. We table it until they come back with us to the deal. Either way, but-
Yeah, the change of motion.
I just don't wanna issue the non-
Well, withdraw your objection.
I'll withdraw it.
Withdraw your motion, withdraw your second.
Just table it.
I'll move a motion to table it.
Yeah.
I'll say that.
Okay, we need a date to table it?
Motion to table, yeah, just like a motion to table is a preferential motion you'd be voted on to that further debate.
Well, the other one is withdrawn, so there's nothing to go down. Just your motion's tabled.
I second that.
Only favor, I, we have a date to table it, too?
So she gets back with the other-
Gets back with the-
So that's gonna be tabled, so that's- Thank you. I just, I go here for the Girl Scouts now. Okay. Now we are to- This says, "Request for revision, but I think it's reconsideration of the golf cart policy in Pelican Preserve."
It is reconsideration.
And you wanted to speak when we got to decide, so please, I'll let you say.
She must have do the golf, two and a half hours late.
Phil Mees and Pete Mac. I'm gonna read my comments just to be sure that I cover everything I wanted to do. I'm sure all of you have read the memo from the P-PAC concerning the request to reconsider the regulation concerning where golf carts should be operated on the main roads in Pelican Preserve. I would like to make a few comments related to and supporting that request. First, as the P-PAC has acknowledged in its memo concerning the request, there is no right answer about where the golf carts should operate in Pelican Preserve's main roads, but there are choices. We recognize that Mr. Guy takes issue with what the P-PAC has proposed in this regard, and we believe that this is a subject on which reasonable people can disagree. Nonetheless, in the P-PAC's unanimous judgment, for the many reasons enumerated in the memo, its choice with respect to where the golf carts should operate represents the best available balance between golf cart and bicycle safety and other traffic needs. Second, it needs to be reemphasized that the P-PAC recognizes that under Florida statutes, this board cannot direct where bicycles can be operated. The intent of the P-PAC recommendation is not to restrict bicycle operation, but to provide a safe place in which they can be ridden exclusively without having possible conflicts with golf carts. Further, as noted in the memo, this addresses the requirement in the Pelican Preserve DRI that the community have, quote, "A system of interconnecting bike paths that link various pods of the development." Third, you should be aware that many Pelican Preserve residents were troubled by this board's initial decision in this matter, and that is the reason it is being brought back today despite its attenuated early, consider, earlier considerations. Many residents were particularly dismayed by the fact that three board members who voted to reject the unanimous initial recommendation of the P-PAC on this matter have probably visited, but do not live in Pelican Preserve, and thus, and thus may not have a full sense of the actual situation on the ground with regard to how golf carts are operated in the community. The reality is that under the current rules, the lion's share of golf cart operators drive their carts fully or partially in the right-hand vehicle lane most of the time. Fourth, the P-PAC provided evidence in the memo that its president's counsel and most residents of Pelican Preserve support its recommendation. Many of these residents were supposed to be here today, but you outlasted them. They were here to corroborate their, they were here to corroborate their support of what we're asking for, but, but as I say, you outlasted it. Finally, as this board made the golf cart rules under which Pelican Preserve is currently operating at its April 19th meeting, it clearly has the power to change those rules on behalf of the Pelican Preserve community, and P, the P-PAC requests that you make it, make the recommended change today. Thank you.
And I have comments.
Phil, I read your, your deal in exhibit B.
Yep.
I'm having trouble with the King's English. What is the difference between one and three? Golf carts should be required to be operated in the four-foot outside travel lane shoulder, and in three, retain the current regulation that golf carts should be operated in the four-foot outside travel lane shoulder. They seem to be the same.
The, the differences between should and require.
Okay, that was the-
And the, and the, and the current rule is they should, but they're not required, and we're saying they should be, they should be required.
And when you add the one and the three together, you get 494, which, you know, you're not talking about a huge difference, but, so like a 46.
56, 44.
Yeah, it's not a, um-
That's a presidential sweep.
Actually, and, and I also wondered if there was couples that responded to that, you know?
No.
Because it was, because it was done online, so you know exactly who responded.
But, but he went back, the, the person who did the thing went back through and made sure that they weren't getting duplicates.
Okay. And, and, let me, I actually had some thoughts that I had on this that I wrote down, 'cause this is a, this has been contentious for years. And my thought process on this, and I actually spoke with Tony on the phone yesterday, Chris was on the phone also, this has been going on for years with the golf carts in Pelican Preserve. I think the confusion was created when the undesignated four-foot lane was painted for bicycle use only without authorization. The DO from the city of Fort Myers, and I had the letter that was actually written in 2001, and that I'm aware of, no changes have been made to that, was that that four-foot undesignated lane was to be used by golf carts. And I think that was where we got to when this board made the decision that they did it. The lane is, was created for golf carts, and golf carts aren't asking to keep bicycles out of it, but bicyclists are asking to take that lane over and kick the golf carts out of it, which it was created for their use.
I would submit to you that in the last 17 years, the situation has changed rather markedly, and that some letter that is 17 years old, I think is not relevant to this, to this decision. The board made a decision that it, and the board can do whatever it wants, and I don't think a 17-year, or, letter is relevant to what, to what we're talking about here.
If the development order was created with that in it, we can't change the development order, and that's what it came down to. And it also came down to the number of golf carts in your community versus the number of bicyclists. And there's, by far, in the documentation that you gave us when we looked at this the last time, there's far more golf carts in your community than there are bicyclists. And, and this body agreed with the city of Fort Myers with their determination that the DO calls for the four-foot undesignated lane to be used for golf carts. Bicyclists can certainly use it, too. It can be shared. And deviation from that, in my opinion, creates an unacceptable liability burden on all of the residents of Gateway, because we are saying that we disagree with how the community was set up by the city of Fort Myers and the development order. And, and Tony also told me that we shouldn't take action on this tonight, that if we do take any action on this tonight, that it is that we agree that we will reconsider it at a future date, because new documents would have to be written for us to consider. So it's not something we can actually change tonight, but I'll let the other board members say-
May I, may I comment on one of, one of the things you said?
Certainly.
There were more people who said they ride a bicycle than own a golf cart when we did this survey. There were 640 who said they ride a bicycle, and 509 who said that they owned a golf cart. So the contention that there are a lot less bicyclists than there are golf cart owners may not be true.
Well, that was, that was what, information that was provided to us previously. I was just going by what I actually have in front of me, so.
But, but, but we didn't provide you the information as to how many bicyclists there were, did we?
Yeah. I didn't bring it with me tonight, but I certainly had that information.
I don't think so.
As I recall, we had this discussion three, four, or five months ago?
Yeah, it was eight.
And I don't recall what you just recited at all being discussed by Tony.
No, I didn't at all.
The liability certainly was discussed.
No, no, it was not.
I don't recall any of that.
And at the, at the time, Tony said that this board could make a decision as, was in the position to make a decision, however they wanted the things, thing to do at that time. So now he's changed his story.
My issue is, I'm, I'm over there at least twice a week, and it's just a complete ignorance of the requirement that was passed. People are driving up and down the street everywhere. The second one, from an engineering perspective, and a golf cart owner myself, driving in that area, and in the other, some areas over there, I defy, it is not four feet, is dangerous. As Phil started out at the beginning, there is no 100% right way on this. It's a mess. But I'm totally ready to make a motion to go with the center deal and the majority of the, with residents wanting.
So, and if I could clarify here, the only thing that's before you is to decide whether or not to reconsider. If you decide you are going to reconsider, that will have to be noticed at another meeting, and you would address how you want to reconsider it at that time. But as for tonight, the only thing you can say is yes or no on the reconsideration?
That's what your question should be.
No, she, excuse me, he can't make that. I called to, to Tony today, too, and the only was person who voted yes that he can reconsider. He voted no, so he can't make the motion to reconsider. And that was, well, Tony called me.
Tony, where, where's, where's this, this is a separate, this is totally a separate issue.
Right, he, yeah, it could be-
And I believe that's correct. I believe that, Chris, isn't that what Tony said on the phone yesterday, that the only people that could request it to reconsider voted in favor of it?
And that's when he, when I went out, that's when he told me on the phone.
Went away and told me? You guys are on me all the time for this same rule, and yet, when it turns the other way, you didn't go and do it your own way. Seems like a little two-faced here.
Tony called, I, I, yesterday, my meeting with Chris. We can get him on the phone if you wanna talk to him.
Well, I mean, I'd make the motion.
And I would, I would-
I would make the motion to reconsider.
Did you vote in favor of it the last time?
I believe I did.
Yes. And, and everybody seems to remember- Everybody seems to remember, four people voted for, Ed voted, in other words, four people.
I thought it was three to two.
No, it was not three to two, it was four to one. It was four to one.
I can't second either then.
Sorry. I didn't make the rule.
But, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it, but Tony, in his legal memo, in reviewing this thing, said that the board had the power to do whatever they wanted, and this is what I was told. And now he's changing his story.
Well, I also think it is.
I don't think that's the case at all. I think what he's saying is procedurally, this is how it has to happen. He's not saying they can't take action, but the Florida statutes require that it has to be placed on the agenda, and it has to be properly noticed, and what's noticed tonight is whether or not they want to reconsider it. So it's not that Tony's changing his position, this is simply what the law requires.
But does that, does it state that only those that voted yes have the authority to reconsider?
Suppose it had been put on the agenda, not as a reconsideration, but if we put it on the agenda as change, if we want to change a thing, could we vote on it tonight?
For an amendment.
Huh? If it was been placed on the menu.
Sorry, Phil, but that's what it says on the agenda. Request for revision.
Yeah, if we said we want.
It doesn't say.
Say we want a revise, so it is on the agenda. I mean, I think you're...
I'm just going by what he told me on the phone that's...
This is the process that you have to come through.
But suppose we said we want it revised, not reconsidered, then it would be okay tonight, is that what we're saying?
That's, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is this is the process, to make the changes, it has to be a motion to reconsider it, there's a procedural way that it has to take place, and it's not based on the word that you use, this is the process that has to be followed. So it's just a two-step process. They say yes, they want to reconsider, no, they don't, and if they do, then whenever they notice it the next time, you know, that would be when the discussion would take place.
Even if the agenda had said, rather than reconsider, revise?
Correct.
On where?
She is.
Do we need, do we need to verify what the voting was?
I'm asking, I'm, Tony's writing all this, but I'm asking him about it.
I just wanted to...
Okay.
So I made the motion to consider the...
Unless I can make a second.
I'm motioning for the second, just because that way they can come back, and if it changes, they can have the opportunity to see if revision is required, or leave it as is.
So I'm assuming that only four can vote on it?
I don't know, I was not, I have no knowledge of this issue at all, I was not privy to the phone call, I'm trying to text Tony to find out.
We need to table this item until we get either Tony on the line or clarification. So I'll...
Because we're not even clear with it.
I'll withdraw my second.
And I'll withdraw my second, and I'll... I'm sorry, I'll withdraw my motion, and I guess we need to table it till we get further.
Next meeting?
Next meeting for reconsider.
So Tony can be here, so he can play it on any...
So he's probably in the, because he's been texting me the entire time, but he isn't right now, so he's probably speaking. Do you want to move it to later in the agenda in case we hear back and then you can decide then?
No, we're going home.
No. That's a possibility, if we have time before we leave and he contacts you, we will. Sorry, Phil.
The only problem is we do it this way.
Yeah.
And then we're going to come back, and he's going to do it again. So that means you're going to have to have another reconsideration at another meeting.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so hopefully we can hear back from him.
And this is important too for to understand, because if there's, I mean, this sets precedent for any position that we've, any position that we've made in the past, is it any policy related, that in order to make an amendment or a change, it has to come back, I mean, this could impact any decision that we've made previously.
And that's why I talked, I called Tony, and I don't remember our name, her name, but she came to me and told me to call him right away, because that was a question of who could make that motion to reconsider, because I wasn't sure who could do that. Thank you.
And I know that what you heard from me wasn't what you wanted to hear, and I'm sorry for that. I also got an email from Bill's Board to me, and it says, "Good morning, this issue should not even be on the agenda as it was researched, studied, and determined what the rules for golf carts are. In discussion with the residents in my association, it is not an issue." And that is the president of Arama at Pelican Preserve.
That's correct. We are not contending that this was a unanimous throughout the community. Yes, there are people who don't think it should be done that way, but the majority of the people in Pelican Preserve think it should be done the way we are recommending, and this board is shooting down what the majority thinks.
You have a vote to table and second on the floor where it should be voted on.
All right. Call the vote on the motion to table.
Aye.
Did you, Ed, vote to table?
Oh, we don't know if Ed can vote on the motion to table.
Tony's actually texting me right now, so I hope we will have a response for you momentarily.
And the next one is Fort Myers Police Department Patrol Proposal for Pelican Preserve.
Yep. You have a memo on this, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have, but...
I think it's pretty clear cut what you're asking for, so if anybody wanted to make...
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, dear.
So Tony can't, or Ed can vote, he just can't make the motion.
If this, if this item had come before the board four, five, six, seven years ago, I would have been 100% against it. But I have seen with my own eyes daily, with speed and the ignorance, ignoring of the stop signs in our neighborhood, and I hate to, I still hate to vote it, because somebody's going to get an expensive ticket and an expensive increase in their insurance, and they're going to be unhappy with anybody who's opposed, who is involved in planning this police protection increase. Nonetheless, if we are going to have any semblance of order and any chance of saving lives and injury, especially on Pelican Preserve Boulevard, I'd like to vote in favor of it.
Well, Phil, I might remind you that you made the same statement when we signed the original contract with the police to come in.
Unconsistent, at least.
You are. And they did come in, and they did issue, and so they were in fairly actively right after we signed that contract, a little bit, and they gave out quite a number of citations, pretty expensive citations, $260 citations.
Do you know how many?
Huh? I'm not sure exactly how many, about a half dozen.
I've only seen them.
Two to the same person.
Good.
And for the same violation. But we're just not, the police, we're just not seeing them, so we think it's worth paying to do it, and this is really a pilot program.
Sometimes I'm afraid to drive out of my neighborhood on Pelican Preserve.
You and I couldn't agree more.
Motion to approve.
You got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got the police.
Okay. Phil, with these numbers, you're moving right up, we just jumped from 960 to 500,000.
Yeah, that's right.
Capital reserve account transfer for Pelican Preserve. This was pretty clear cut too when I read the memo, so I'll entertain a motion. Bill, you want to make it?
I will. Move approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got that one too.
Thank you.
Acceptance of Magnolia Lakes wetland.
I'll address this. We have the half-acre wetland in the back of Magnolia Lakes, and it's been brought into acceptable condition, inspected by the Water Management District. All the exotics have been removed, they approved it, so this is just to request authorization to execute the transfer of operational entity for that wetland, and we'll take over the maintenance responsibility. But if I may add, the future of that wetland is dim with the school construction and then putting a berm up will probably effectively isolate, destroy that wetland, so it may be a short term on the maintenance.
Chris, why would we have been out there eight times in the last four months?
It was really on the developers dying to remove those exotics, and they did...
They were removing them. I mean, why did we need to go back? They were telling us they were removed, and they weren't removed, and we just kept going back.
The Water Management District came out one time and said no, and then Al went out a couple times and said, no, it's still not done right.
It's been under fees all that time, and they've got the five-year plan, obviously, taken care of.
Yes, sir, and it's done there, so, and this will set a new land speed record for approving a transfer of operational entity for the Water Management District. So move.
Okay, Bill made a motion?
Second.
All right. Second, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are moving right along. Discussion of the acceptance of physical year 2019 meeting schedule.
This is the July 4th.
Yeah, that July 4th would attest that.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm looking at the December, this December, where the 20th is at around Christmas time again, and I was wondering if we could take the 6th and the 20th and make it December 13th, which would be in between, and that way...
Why don't we just leave it the 6th and give everybody a long, nice break for the holidays, so we don't have to do anything till January.
That works.
Okay, so we'll eliminate the 20th?
That's what I had on mine, I was going to see if everybody was in agreement to just not have...
But we won't have the engineers here for two meetings.
Okay, so we'll eliminate the 20th. I'm just thinking...
I am, even if they're not here. It's just money. And July 4th.
The next one is the July 4th.
Why do we go second and fourth instead of, or you're just going to eliminate July 4th, oh, and only have one in July?
I looked at the July, and I thought, either way that we do it, if we did it the in-between or after, you're still budding up week to week for board meetings, and that's really hard for staff to get.
So just drop the fourth.
That's what my recommendation was going to be, ready to know how everybody feels about it.
Well, if we get close and it's something that's dated, we can create.
But what, isn't that the budget time too? So could we do it like on a different day that week? I'm just thinking it's the budget, and we might need that day.
Well, you don't want to go earlier because of vacations, and the day after is Friday, so it's really not good either one.
If we're in the middle of budget seeking, and we decide we want to add a meeting in July, I think we should go then, because we can ask everybody what their schedules are, and then it would be just for budget.
Chris, I just have to go with paper. This has to get the newspaper, that's all, bunch up today.
I don't have the calendar in front of me, but if you move it to the third Thursday, it forces us to change our meeting.
Yeah, they were discussing it.
I think we're just going to, so, I'll entertain a motion on this to accept this proposed draft of the meeting schedule, removing December 20th, 2018, and July 12, 2019.
So move. Bill can have it, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It brings us to the P-PAC report. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, that's all, I mean, you've got to report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I don't even need it, no. I don't think we have any questions, and Mr. McCulloch wasn't going to be here today, so if you have any questions, I guess we can direct them to him on the Stony Brook Report. And this brings us to the minutes that he sent agenda.
So I'll make a motion to approve that it's in agenda.
A motion to accept the consent in items 7, 8, D, and C. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are to supervise the comments, and I started down here the last time, so I'll start with you, Mr. Taylor.
Well, I've got a ton of them, but I think you could, because at the time, we're just going to have to delay it, but we need to have a real serious discussion relative to our budget and balance sheets and all this. As you know, last night, there were questions asked, and there was a lot of confusion. For example, one of them, and I think Doug may have brought it up, maybe I didn't understand his wording or didn't hear it all, but there was a reference that we had $700,000 in extra expenditures last year in unbudgeted, or unplanned, not in budgeted, unplanned projects. And I'm not aware that we had, other than Hurricane Irma related, I'm not aware of anything to the tune of $700,000 that we approved as a board for an unbudgeted project, be it in enterprise or of a one. Am I missing something?
It was cumulative?
Yeah, Chris, that's the, that's the information that you put together for me.
Because any project that we do that's not in budget has come before us and have an approval, not of the project.
It does.
Where the money's coming from, but I don't remember approving any transfers of money with the exception of the Irma stuff.
Yeah, we have.
I think it was cumulative.
So that was the one question, is if somebody could identify what those are, I was getting strange looks down there.
You want to forward the email that you sent me out to the board?
Okay. Okay.
And some of it was items that we approved because we weren't doing other things. So that's why we didn't necessarily go over budget, $700,000.
Well, like you said, it took any confusion, but $700,000 got my attention, because I thought, I don't remember, I remember Irma, and I think there may have been one at the right that we transferred, I can't even remember what it was, but, okay. Then the other one is, last night, another issue that came up, and there was some heads turning. I would like to have a discussion of our balance sheet. I don't know, Bill, you're more in this than I am whatsoever, but we've got terminology in the balance sheet, and Stephen has written back and helped a little bit, but I think the whole board needs to hear what he sent me, and I can't send it to you, because, well, I can, I can send it to Chris, and Chris can send it out. That may be the way of doing it. The issue is, is that we have seven point, at this point in time, and I realize it's a snapshot, but everything you do on the balance sheet is going to be on a snapshot, but we have $7.8 million in cash in the enterprise fund. That is one health of a lot of money. What I'm trying to find out is, I know when you have funds, you have to have coverage, and there may be some money in there for that. There's always the operator, that you have three months, and in our case, maybe four months, because we do the bi-bundling billings. What I'd like to find out is, so that $7.8 million, how much is reserved and/or dedicated to uses that are not inclusive of either repair, replacement, or capital?
Let's hold on to that, so we...
Well, I'll sum it this way, Bill. Can we have Steve, let's have Chris send you the emails that Steve sent to me to get to all the other board members, that everybody read the August balance sheet, and you'll get real quick what the problem is.
Okay. I only want to say, if you don't understand precisely what those terms mean, you can go all askew, and just because... And just because you've got some assets that total a big number, you can't ignore the liabilities.
Well, and, and that's my point. We need to have a discussion, because the one thing that we've got to do, and we've got to do it quickly, and I, I'm, I was going to disagree with Stephen, but I'm thinking, let's don't make a mountain out of a molehill. We've got the combination of a rapid study report coming, and we have the assessment methodology report coming. We have got to take, and this is what one of the accounting firms that I talk, or auditing firm, said, "You are not supposed to be co-mingling this money." Water, money connection fees that come in for water are dedicated to water. Sewer, sewer irrigation, irrigation, because that's the basis of how you set your fees. And that's not fair and equitable to the guy that is a large-volume water user that gets away with murder on irrigation and vice versa.
I can understand that, but I don't remember ever hearing that before.
The issue is, is that we need to set, be able to tell Stephen how to allocate that much, that money, and how much can we allocate? Can we allocate five million, four million? We need that to put together the cash flow that Mike is working on to be able to figure out what we need to do in the way of generating additional revenue, if any, or do we have enough to cover our projections on both the repair and replacement, the capital, and the O O one count?
Let's give Stephen the assignment.
I just want to make sure.
And it would be nice to know.
It's a, if, if you understand that budget and understand all those meetings, well, more power to you. There's stuff in there that I thought I read pretty well, that what I thought was reserves for repair and replacement was what the wording says, that that's not what they are. So it needs some delineation.
Right, there's some in there for rate stabilization.
That's correct. My, my, my bottom line is, how much of that can we transfer to capital reserve and repair and replacement reserve? Because our rate consultant needs that information.
You made your point, and you made it very well. Well, let's leave it to Steve to get that to us.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Because it would be nice to know exactly how much available cash we have, as opposed to what's tied up and everything, so.
Doug, you're up.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I want to make sure that we get back on our workshop schedule. I think there's, there's quite a few things, I think, going in this year, so Chris, I think you're on top of that. As we move forward with the new engineering contract, and as we're on our, our new year, I know we addressed it briefly in the engineer's contract, but we need to maintain some type of holistic, uh, status report, both for capital and maintenance. So I know that we're talking about having project plans and doing those types of things, but we need an internal holistic document where we can pull up and review monthly. Here's all of our capital projects, here's all of our maintenance projects, where they're at, who they're allocated to, what's the, the sequencing, because we need to be on top of our priority list, both for maintenance and for capital. And Chris, I think you, you know, it might be a good idea to work with staff to see.